I see, I do.
Okay.
We do, no traffic.
Thank you for having waters available. I wasn't sure we were allowed to.
I was gonna tell everybody like beverages and stuff, you know, it's fine. I just figured like a whole on meal.
Yeah, this would have been our comfort food meal too.
I know.
I was thinking about chicken and rice, but not happening.
Chicken and rice?
I had crust of flakes, it was not.
Tara?
Yes.
If you bring something like to Munchen, can you eat it or not?
Um, I think just as long as you're, you know, kind of.
I don't want to be sharing with all the boss.
Yeah, don't chew it, Jim.
Really yogurt.
Live mic?
Yes.
We are, we are.
We are live.
We are live right now. But we're just waiting for.
If he can hear us.
Can you see and hear us? And hear us?
Even that live mic situation in California?
Yes.
Oh my god.
There is, that's not good. Yeah.
Oh, they all quit, right?
Yes.
Oh, because what they say is actually.
Oh.
Yeah, terrible.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
That's horrible.
A whole board of education in town, suburban district.
Because of, were they trying to push through?
No.
Well, they were caught on tape making very derogatory comments about parents.
Family.
Oh yeah.
And families, I mean, really.
Some very rough words on my.
Oh yeah.
Wow.
Did they realize the recording was on?
Right, and then they, and then they said, then you hear them saying, you mean this is public or something like that? It's like, well, why didn't you just make real fools of yourselves?
Sure, how can I help you?
Where's Nick? We need him.
Yeah, let's get Nicholas up here. Yeah. He's ready to apply. He will be back at mini golf though, Jim. He said that Katie was gonna be back and his little brother's gonna be there.
So he's liking Easter?
He loves it. He's super happy. I mean, even with all the weirdness.
Yeah.
So.
And he's up there?
He's there.
Yeah.
Yep, he's there. And he goes to classes.
Wow.
Two days a week. He's got classes in person and then the rest are like a hybrid online mix. It was rough last semester, but this semester's done better.
Yeah, we were, we went up for a, cause Matthew was accepted and he, we went up for an accepted students tour.
Oh, good.
And it's, it was nice to see students and like their, their cafeteria is open, which a lot of schools you can't, you can only grab and go.
Yep.
And there you can sit and eat, which is nice.
Yeah, and they're testing everybody every week.
Yeah, yeah.
Just custom.
It's 100%.
Hundred percent.
Testing, which is great.
They did a good job last semester keeping fit, like they had low instant rates, so they've done a really good job.
Yeah.
Um, so fingers crossed that we all go well this year, second semester. Listen, Nick, I'm like, you don't break, you're one of the most. I'm the Navy anymore.
Hi.
Oh, I'm on the wrong livestream. Well, things are gonna move pretty fast. The, the current rate, they're gonna start hitting the youngest group by.
By like April, yeah, by April.
Be done by mid May.
I was really thrilled to see that. I'm excited.
Yeah, which is great.
Oh, you had yours?
Yeah, no problems, a little sore arm, but.
A five years ago?
I went to Woodbury.
To where?
I went far.
Woodbury, yeah.
Were you saying Woodbury?
That's uh, East Haven, or not East Haven, but like near New Haven, right?
Oh no, it's, it's up.
Oh, Woodbury is in Nor, okay. I'm being Woodbury.
But I got it.
What, what, what?
Well, I was taking my mother there.
Oh, I see, I see.
So.
I see, I see.
It was fine. It was lovely. It's only an hour.
You know, I just, like, what hospital you, yeah, wow.
Did you have two Karen or one shot?
I had one.
Just the one?
I had both. No, I did both.
Oh, you said you should go back there again for the second.
I did.
Wow.
Oh, we did love it. It was fine.
Thank you.
No, but it, no, she's no nothing. Yeah, I hear everybody saying the second shot, we have more.
And it doesn't go to the second, okay. I'm sorry, you said it, Mark is ending.
Perfect timing, actually. Yep, our mics are live, everybody, and we are good to go.
All right.
Let's see what time is it. Alright, so it's 5:41 and we will call this meeting a field tip report of education to order and we'll start with the presentations.
Brought by the United States of America and to your public, which stands for nation under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Brady. So we're gonna start off looking for a motion to approve our minutes from our regular meeting on February 9th. Moved by Eileen, seconded by Alan. Alan in favor, I. Any opposed? Any objections? Alright, so. Great, let's jump right in. So first up is under educational leadership, board rules, responsibilities and operations.
So do we wanna do the intro while we're here?
Might as well, let's do it.
Absolutely. Um, I know that everyone here, it's not their first time for a particular meeting, right?
Right.
Um, so, uh. We, it actually looks as if your agenda is relatively short, right, in terms of, um, but if you followed your normal practice, then people put suggestions into Tara about what might appear on the agenda. Um, we'll do the first part of it in open session, right, that's general board functioning matters. And then the second portion, anything about individuals, about the performance of the superintendent, about the performance of the board chair will be in, um, exactly.
And I just wanted to note that included in your packet is a, is a blank copy of the summit of evaluation. This is a perfect opportu- opportunity, as I said on my email, take notes, ask questions. Need clarification on anything, this is, this is one of the meetings that it's appropriate to ask.
Yep, and then for my team, so we do this now and then we will have another, um, meeting in May, right, which is our kind of, our Q and A meeting, which will go over any questions or concerns again. And then we'll, um, follow that up with our review. And we'll try to do those in person as well.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Okay, so then. The board roles, responsibilities and operations, uh, is on every one of your agendas, right? And so are there particular topics that anyone wants to broach in the context of that general agenda item?
Yeah, I don't think I have any personal topics and I re-looked it on there just in case people had concerns or what have you, but I have to say, and I, I just wanna say thank you to everybody. I think our online meetings have been going well. Um, and I appreciate everybody's participation and, you know, everybody's asked good questions and I feel like we tried very hard to make it as regular as possible. Um, so I, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for their, you know, going along and participating. I know that online meetings, um, in technology is just, um, challenging for everybody. So, um, I'm super appreciative of that and, um, glad that I did bring my cat tonight for her to walk back and forth and send me for the whole meeting, although I'm sure it's interesting.
I do have a question, if I could ask. First of all, I do think that you've been doing a really great job of facilitating the online meetings, um, so you should be very proud of the work that you've done, um, with that transition. My question is, um, when we're doing a Zoom meeting, what does the public see? Do they see the room that you and Trent are sitting in or do they see the Brady Bunch?
Oh, they see the room we're sitting in.
Oh, which I thought, cause when you see other Zoom meetings like the police commissioner, you see the Brady Bunch, that, the, and so I just didn't know, I, it's, it's sort of, I don't know if it's a rhetorical question or if it's a, something that, um, do we, is there. Should we consider having board members displayed or is the group, I, you know, I don't know what the, if there's a thought behind it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm flexible on it. Um, I don't know for my technology standpoint, Jen, how we tran- would transition to that and still have it be livestreams.
I don't either because we're using YouTube, so we're using our WebEx and our live feed is actually through YouTube. So I would think, and I'm not sure how good the resolution would be, the simplest way would be to have the camera pointed at the board, but then of course I wouldn't be seen. So you'd be the board without a superintendent unless I stayed home. And I tend to come in just in case.
Right, yeah.
Trent, I need to look a few things out. It's something I can ask Trent and the IT folks to look at, but we don't use Zoom either.
Right, and I think that's probably what the difference is. It's probably the, the platform that we're using our meetings for. And I'm not saying it has to be one way or another, it was just something I was curious about and.
Yeah.
And I do also applaud you for coming in for each of these. I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I just, it's just easier in case there's any technical issues or it's just easier all around.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so we will look into what other options there are.
Yeah, and let, let me just say that again, I don't have a problem with how it's being done. It was just something I was wondering, like, and frankly, I'm probably grateful that it's just the room that they see about me.
Yeah, the ability to be a little bit more casual is certainly a wonderful thing. Um, but yeah, I agree. I, I personally don't have a problem with meeting, right, about around that school.
I hope that we won't be doing this much longer.
Yeah, and that's something we can certainly talk about too, you know. What the boards, you know, I, you know, I'm, I would hate, hate to not be able to be more open to the public if we met in person and that's been the challenge all along is when you have gatherings and people coming in person. So I think until like we've got more of a comfort level about having people come in person and put in the room with us, um, you know, we're probably gonna be stuck with the online format, but, um.
I think until we get here more about the vaccination schedule, that's kind of a critical piece.
The vaccinations, yes. And maybe before the end of the year, we will be able to be back in person, you know, and have a normal.
Yeah.
Experience, well, yeah, normal-ish, still masks and all that stuff, but.
I think, I think one happy thing about all of this is that people are sitting in their homes, participating in municipal meetings more than ever. Um, you know, I know I've gone on a few town meetings both here and, and where I live and feel a lot more people engaging than I've seen in the past. Little meeting in most towns is one or two in the audience.
It's getting me.
Do we have any idea, I'm sure Trent does, how many?
Yes. Yes, he does. He will be able to give us the count, actually.
How many people participate or view us rather?
Yeah, the last time, very low. Last time was three, I believe, one of them.
It looks like there were maybe two.
There's support.
Yeah, I think one was Todd's.
So my guess is we'll get very low to perhaps maybe a different timing, you know, posted, so.
There are people who view it later, you know, like I know.
Yep. Our private.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Eileen.
I just had a question, maybe on Karina's question. So they don't see us, but they can still hear us.
Right.
Yeah.
But yet, so is it best for us to identify ourselves then?
Yes, and so you should be.
If they're not seeing you, it's gonna be these voices.
Yeah.
And that, that is something I haven't been good about, kind of prompting everybody as a reminder, but yeah, when you go to speak on the online meeting, you should identify yourself when you speak so that, you know, the public knows that it's Eileen Baker making a comment or Karina asking a question.
That's a good point.
Because we didn't know that they could see us.
Yeah.
Well, and to tag on to that, our votes have, you've, right, you've count our raised hands as our vote, but the public can't hear that. So that might be, maybe it should be an audible.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or a unanimous with Eileen just abstaining.
And she has like a good job of summarizing, you know, like.
So that was unanimous or, you know, so and so abstained from that, so yeah, I do try to.
Cause then everyone will be knowing who it is, because unanimous is everyone else.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so that's a good point though, Eileen, and I'll do a better job of trying to prompt everybody to say their name when they speak.
No, it's not a pitter gun, it's just more, I didn't realize that.
It's being aware of it.
Just announce what you're gonna say.
And you're, you know, oftentimes you're like, oh, Karen has a question.
Yeah, and I do try to call that, that is actually one of the nice things about seeing you and when you raise your hand on the screen, I can see you and then I can call and say, oh, George's gotta comment or, you know, Eileen's gotta comment, so I, I do find that.
Yeah. And I do have one other operational question and that is with respect to public comment. So I know that early on we had restricted public comment and I can't remember the exact, um, reasoning behind it, but have we given any consideration to maybe allowing for that? Because again, the other town meetings do allow for that.
So we do, um, allow for them to add, like, um, so there's a number of ways to, to reach us. Uh, Trent does monitor the chat, so if there are people who are on YouTube and they chat a message, then Trent is monitoring that and we've got the ability to have them feed that to us for questions. They can email us, they can mail us, they can call the central office. So, um, you know, I, I don't know that from a controlling the meeting perspective, having people dial in, then that conference is probably a little hard to control.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think, you know, we probably, I know that we put it on our agendas about the ways to communicate and I think we should probably add that you can't chat us in, in the, um.
Yeah, that might be something to add at the beginning of the meeting, just to say if anybody's viewing any questions, that would be good.
You know, if you're on the livestream or what have you, yeah, exactly. But, um, yeah, Trent does a good job of monitoring, I imagine. The questions we get are generally like, oh, we can't hear you or, you know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That kind of stuff, which is great too, you know.
And again, I mean, if you haven't gotten any feedback from public as to, you know, that it's not working for them.
I'm missing this element, yeah. I think we would have gotten, you know, letters or phone calls, I would imagine people would have then.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
But many boards have suspended their public comment in this timeframe because it's hard to pull off with very formal. Some are just accepting written comment, um.
And we determined that we would treat it like, um, if we had a letter, you know, Karen summarizes it for us and then, you know, would share it with us, so we would treat any kind of email correspondence or letter correspondence the same way, so, you know, acknowledging what people are saying to us. George, go ahead.
I mean, just a quick reminder, I mean, again, I think we've all been really good about this, but, you know, what we are in the meeting is because we can't really see the public, not that we see the public queue either, but, um, maybe just to be more cognizant of what we say. I mean, we're all very good, I mean, there is.
Yes, timely reminder. And I like literally.
It's all my guy.
In my professional world too. Like, oh, hi. Hot mic, scary. So, but yeah, a good, good point, George, and like I said, that's a reminder. So other comments or, you know, questions or thoughts, um, in regards to our roles or responsibilities or how we're operating?
I guess, this is one of the, I mean, I, I guess, uh, from my perspective, I mean, we're, I mean, we're getting, uh, all the information that, I mean, I certainly all, all the information that I need and, you know, and I, I know you've been part of the discussion you had, Jen, in terms of, like, excusing your administration and, you know, I'm very glad you're doing that, right? And when they do show up, it's always great, but we're, I mean, I'm certainly getting all the stuff that I need from them. Question is whether they're getting it up from us, right, because, uh, we are a distance from them. I mean, I was just thinking in the past, like, you know. And rightly so, but we, we're missing like all the awards tonight, we're missing the, the teachers who got tenure, that and so on, and, and rightly so, right, I mean, we, it's, it's, we'll just pull those off the, uh, Zoom meetings, I think, and so, but I, I presume they're still going on, right, obviously.
Well, um, the only things that have gone on, you've been invited to, so NHS, the concerts, um, those are the only things that have really gone on, other than like parent information nights that have been exclusively for parents. The administrators not coming to the meetings, I think they are very grateful, um, to have the night at home, because the days are so stressful.
Absolutely.
And often their contact tracing, although less recently, um, and I think they really appreciate it. However, I, you know, I'm sure at some point, like, I was just talking to Tara now about spotlights and how to do the spotlights this year. And they suggested, could we all come on one night and kind of build it on a theme and do two minutes each presentation here, rather than try to drag it around to the schools with all the big concerns and issues that that would bring. So they are thinking of ways to connect with you, um, that don't involve a lot of their time, but, but yeah, that's, that's hopefully gonna happen on April 6th.
I'm just trying to figure out when, when the teacher tenure announcement, the ones that get celebrated.
We do those in the fall?
Yeah. So do we miss those already?
We didn't do those.
We didn't do those, okay. Right, so that's my, that's what I'm saying, I mean, and I presume, I presume that they, they were our cohort, they were.
Yes, yes.
And so, hopefully you pass on off eventually.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, and I will mention it again coming into, and actually, time is good because, um, I can send that out, um. Probably a good time to send it out would be about May, and that would be appropriate with the cycle and they're all being, you know, hopefully they're all being renewed and some sort of letter to that effect that is, uh, on behalf of the Board of Ed and, you know, have you post on it.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. I agree with George's. That is the one kind of, uh, many, one of many, you know, kinds of disconnects we have, like, you know, I miss award night too, like I.
Celebrations.
Yeah, celebrations are so good.
Yep, still not sure how about any of the Google, but at least the regular best.
But I'll say that it was well done last year, you know, the, the way that we finished the year out, you know, we sat home, you know, everybody dressed up in our living room and ate popcorn and watched on TV.
Yeah, but we had a, we, we were catching the awards that were the unusual awards that were not the typical.
Yeah, and that we didn't do.
And so, and so those.
Yeah.
Remember, do you remember those?
Like, we already recognized the folks that went dancing awards or.
The ones a quarter, uh, board meetings, yeah, we've not done those.
Yeah. Yeah. But, but presumably those are going on as well.
They're not really going on. No, I mean, there are letters going out, we're celebrating people, and student of the month is getting their letters and there are celebrations in that they get announced, but nothing like, no, because they can't gather.
I see, I see.
And it is, as you rightly identified, it's a lot to put the technology together for all these different events and kids are on these things all day, so they don't think anybody's, uh, shouldn't assume, but I, I'm thinking.
Raising their hand to more.
Right, because I mean, even like when Joe Bradley was nominated for one of the participants, that's, that's huge, right? And so normally that, we would have recognized, that would have obviously.
So that recognition was designed, Megan wanted to do it, and so we let her do it, and we did a press release.
I see, perfect. Nice, yeah.
So we're keeping, we're keeping up with those things in that way, but they don't have the tenderness that they did. There is a loss.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, thoughts, uh, before we move on? Go ahead, Eileen.
I was just gonna say that people have had a chance to read the, also the public schools leadership team self-evaluation process and process, it's excellent. So I don't know where it came from, but it's terrific, Karen, sometimes including this something.
Karen and George.
National Social Board Association, that's just what I read and I thought, it really.
Captures.
It seems to be essence of what we are and what we do, you know, and the openness of innovation and things to make us so a little bit more innovative, we need to, like. Yep, and so this is a great document, I say the public schools leadership team self-evaluation process and process.
We didn't have, we didn't have that for the super tense evaluation, we didn't have it for self-evaluation, we didn't have a handbook, but, you know, we didn't have any of those documents that need to be here when we're no longer here, you know? So, you know, that was sort of one of the main goals.
You're gonna be here forever.
So many levels.
Yes.
Anyway.
But you're right, Eileen, and thanks for calling that out. I think it's excellent work and I think that the tweaks that, um, you did for Dan in the, in the fall, you know, really, um, focused us all in, so I, I feel good about that.
You know, I'm living working documents, so it's what we keep tweaking, you know, it's what we need something added to the handbook, you know, just bring it up and.
There was a leak here moving to this year, um, you know, maybe 2006, I just think they're rubbing their fair.
So other thoughts before we move on? Great, I'm glad we left it on there, so that's a confession.
I think actually, um, we covered or started in anyway, um, communication and public relations with Jan's discussion about the spotlight program, um, and some of the awards. Is there anything else on that topic?
Yeah, can you talk a little louder? Maybe I'm one of these.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, the mask.
I think it's, yeah, it's a mask, I mean. Um, so I was moving to the next topic, which is communication and public relations, general update, and noting that Jan had already, um, sort of jumped into the topic with her brief discussion about the spotlight program. And, uh, inviting anybody else to, to jump in on that topic with questions or concerns or compliments or the one.
And I think, um, Trent had put together a communications report, is that what we're gonna cover now, as Jan?
Yep, that's that. Yes, it should be on the left side of your folder. And really what you have here is Trent went through and did his very best to capture the many communications that we have had. You can see that part of it was already presented to you back in October and then there's a dark line, um, on page four, and you can see what has happened since October. I'm sure you've looked at it, I'm certainly not gonna read this to you, but I do wanna highlight, um, I just wanna make a few points about communication and public relations. Obviously, as you just said, um, communicating public relations celebratory events are challenged in, at this time. And so we have had to pivot and retool the way we think and do things so that we would be able to still do it a different way, um, those things we've done before. And then layer on top of that so many additional communications about COVID and constant changes in best practices and information coming from the CDC and DPH and SDE and all those alphabets. But.
Every acronym.
I would say in the last 12 months, we have done more communicating, uh, than ever. And we have had to develop a style for communication that, that fits the message. There are sometimes we need to provide lots of details, there's sometimes it needs to be succinct, there's sometimes it needs to be more personal. And therefore we do Google meetings with parents and Google meetings with staff, because that's as personal as we can get, uh, Google meetings with students, so that they get the information as personally and as firsthand as possible, particularly when the information is complicated. So very deliberate decision-making about how we're gonna communicate everything. And we have had more stakeholders with whom to communicate, with which to communicate. Cause now we have to have all kinds of community partners. I never talked with the people at the regional health authority before this, I talk to them at least once a week now. Emergency management has been weekly meeting, it was daily there for a while, but it's now weekly. Um, Department of Public Health is a weekly meeting. The Commissioner's Office and State Department, I have to give the state their due. I, I know that, you know, it's fun to blame everybody at some level, not at whole level. But they have worked very hard to get us through this. Agree with what they've done or not, they, they certainly have not backed off on the work that they've been doing and they've provided lots of information for us to share. So I think lately we've been talking most about COVID, of course, the weather, I get to call those lovely calls, which tough season to get that one right. And then of course the new strategic plan and communicating about that. But as I said, very deliberate, making sure we have two-way communication, that's why I like those Google meetings with parents. I honestly don't think I'm gonna stop doing those. I think they are a great way to include the maximum number of people possible. Um, and even the voluntary staff meetings, I'll do a staff meeting at 3:30 or 4 o'clock and because the information is so pertinent to their lives, 140 people will hop on a call at that hour.
What's your participation typically for parent meetings?
So it's been as high as, uh, hundreds, you know, two or 300, and as low as more, and it's been dwindling, so lately it's been 40 and 50, but that was my hope. My hope was that the meeting gets to the point where they didn't have a need for the meetings anymore. I told them, we'll keep doing this till you don't need it, we're doing another one tomorrow. Um, and then there's always been a way for them to communicate with us two ways, even when we're shut down. So there was an email address set up called School Closure in the spring, there's an email address now called, uh, Back to School. And people do take advantage of that and we make sure that it's out there, um, and they, they will communicate. And what's great about that is there are four of us who monitor those and we just get it to the right person to answer. It's a help question, if it was the nursing director or Dr. Cordula's, if it's, you know, logistics, it might go to a principal, um, and that's all worked very well. We've also continued to improve, um, our website, we have a new athletic site, if you haven't had a chance, it's still somewhat under construction, but we've got a lot of pieces up. We have done a lot with our food service program, I have to give credit to Jeff Chung and Trent Gerbers who created ordering food from home. Doesn't matter whether your child is home or your child's in school, you can do this from home on a regular basis. You know, we've learned how to livestream pretty much anything and everything, you can go on and watch basketball games now. And, uh, we've been very, very lucky, um, that we've had the support of talented people in the district, the parents and the community at large, uh, to make these efforts worthwhile. We've learned a lot on communication, I think we've gotten more sophisticated with communication, uh, and we've learned a lot on public relations. And what you see here, again, I won't walk you through it, but what you see here is really just, some things took us five minutes to do and some took us weeks to put together. And this isn't meant to be anything more than just a, a list of, of those things. Um, I think the last thing I'll say is, uh, there've been focus groups, there've been meetings with students, uh, people still have an opportunity for it to give voice, um, to issues and concerns. And also to celebrate our, our music teachers, for example, coming up the, the concerts, the online concerts, and then doing NHS that way. So it's, we're learning and we're learning how to survive and thrive, uh, using different means and methods. And finally, to answer questions. And finally, to answer questions.
Hi, Ellen. There's so many platforms here, like, um, Facebook. Or does Old Saver have a Facebook?
We have Facebook, Twitter, we have both Facebook and Twitter. Sorry?
It just looks like, it seems like each platform takes a lot of time.
It does.
I mean, for Facebook, that's why I was saying like Facebook, so somebody has to monitor that, and I just wonder, not that I'm so tech savvy, but I wonder what Facebook, you know, if you, you're putting out, or the district is putting out information, but it's interesting to be able to also take a look at what other people may be commenting on.
Well, we don't allow comments on our Facebook or Twitter, uh, because the only thing you can do is like, because we just don't wanna hold kids or, or staff members up for ridicule, that is, uh, that's a bit of liability for us.
Yeah.
And obviously a terrible situation, so those are mostly one-way communications, we use Facebook and Twitter to push out, um, you know, not necessarily time-sensitive communications, celebratory communications, or here's some important information that you should have, here's an update on something, Twitter is more of what we call rah rah rahs. So, anything we wanna celebrate or excited about, have a game tonight, or, you know, Joe Bradley won this award, or is Canada finalist, that sort of thing. We use, we use Twitter similar to the way we use our electronic signs. Um, and we use Facebook to just talk about what's up and coming, or the latest information, uh, because we find that parents frequent Facebook. We should get an Instagram account, I guess, if we wanna connect with kids, but.
Snapchat, Dan, it's just too awesome now.
And it's, just, I don't know, stop, I think I actually, but when schools are closed, do staff just get calls, and they'll get them the night before? As opposed to.
Traveling stuff.
Which is what a lot of schools do, because they're calling at the last minute, but I just was wondering.
I made my life, uh, uh, more complicated, uh, by saying we were going to go to remote learning on certain snow days, because now I can stay up late and get up early. But it's worth that, because, um, it, I agreed when talking to the teachers and when talking with the parents through one of the Google meets, that I would, I put this out, I said, I will only call a remote learning day if I can call it the night before, for two reasons. One, um, planning, you know, it's, it's different to have a snow day than it is to have your kids learning, you know, it takes a lot more parent attention. It also takes a lot more on that part of the teachers to be ready for that day that's online. And also, uh, we have, you know, we are part of a federal food program that says that any school day, doesn't matter where that school day is held, we have to feed students, so we have to get food out to them. And that means that we have to plan with our food service folks to get food out the afternoon before, before school closes, the night before they'll come back and pack lunches to be picked up, or if the snow isn't gonna start until later in the day at eight o'clock in the morning. So, all that has to be coordinated and planned for a remote learning day. The last snow day, which shouldn't have been one, um, was, that's another story, was a snow day. It was not a remote learning day, 'cause I wanted to go to school the next morning, I wanted, I figured we could get in on a two-hour delay, and I was a lone wolf on that one, so, um, so that's the, a long answer to your short question.
Do they teach meteorology at superintendent school, Jan?
They teach nothing, I do, nothing, I do. A little bit of teacher evaluation, that's all I remember.
So, other questions for Jan in regards to, um, public relations, um, and the, the communications report that she's given us an update on?
So, Jan, you mentioned the other, oh, sorry.
No, just a quick question, I was just wondering, is, is, is Trent responsible or principals if, for example, the Joe Bradley, we'll use that as an example, you know, these highlights of celebrations getting out, out to the press, is there?
Press releases come from Trent.
They come from Trent, okay.
So, that's because we wanna manage them here at Central Office, so the information may come from someplace else, or even a draft may come from somewhere, but Trent and I like to review them before they drop, because his title, you know, being in charge of public relations and finding superintendent, wanna make sure that we're getting it right.
Okay. Go ahead, Ellen.
So, I was just curious about, you know, the new relationships in form, for example, emergency management.
Yeah.
That you, you, at least once a week?
At least once a week, uh, Chief and I, because the clinic is here, um, you know, because there's so much going on, and we talk probably every other day. Um, emergency management is every Wednesday night, and that's town emergency management, that includes, so I have an opportunity to listen to and present with the ambulance people and the fire and, uh, Middlesex Hospital, um, CRAD, emergency management, Prawford, you know, sometimes the other first selectmen are on as well, I, I communicate more with the first selectmen this year than I ever have to. Again, it's about necessity and planning and just making sure that, and, and what's developing, I think, are really good habits of communicating with each other, which we, everyone was fine, we didn't have to do that before. And things were such a crisis mode this year, that it, it, you just forged relationships that were not there before, just 'cause you didn't need each other as much. But I do think it's been a real asset, even a connection with Acton Library and Amanda there, um, you know, connecting with either family about, you know, dealing with, with issues and of concerns, just been, but that's always been a strong relationship, it's just been very positive. And I know more about epidemiology than ever. Meteorology, epidemiology, again, nothing in the super tense.
And I know it's an overused term, because we use it a lot in states, it's like a silver lining, so did it help kind of with the silver lining with, um, Chief of Police?
Oh, definitely.
I mean, I would say it probably has, but I think that's.
I think, I think collaboration, yeah, I think collaboration all around has been terrific, and, and that's, this town is, is doing very well. I know there's been suffering, and I'm, I don't mean to pay short trip to that, and we did have one death outside of, um, long-term, long-term care facilities, we had thirty-six deaths in long-term care facilities, we had a number of people ill, we've had people lose their jobs. So, uh, my next statement doesn't pay short trip to that, we've done amazingly well in Old Saver. I mean, look at the budget that was just proposed on both the town and board side, at a time when people are panicked about what to do next year and where are the resources gonna come from. The, the, uh, town recovery committee on which I serve, um, for education, early childhood, they have raised, not me, I can't take credit for this, they have raised so much money for this community. It's been, it, it's been a huge effort, and it, it has been, I would attribute it to people's willingness to work together and spend a lot of time and energy putting efforts like that together. Everybody, there isn't anybody I could single out, I mean, some have just not stopped working, but there isn't anyone I could single out in the community as having done an extraordinary amount more than others, and the Chief of Police and Emergency Management have done a ton to get this vaccine clinic up and going, uh, even to get the testing down at the, at Saver Point, but, um, first selectman and his group with fundraising, amazing.
I feel, and Mr. Roman, I can imagine to this, that might be a platform as we're moving forward and things settle, relationship that to be strengthened and perhaps this help to strengthen it with that.
No such thing as a bad opportunity that doesn't give you something to improve, you know? There always is something good that comes out of everything, I do believe that. I think a lot is coming out of this, but.
Little questions or comments in regards to the communications report?
I mean, I just wanted to comment, I mean, this is, I think this is gonna be a, I think Eileen just said it, so I, I think this is gonna be a running theme throughout the night, right? So, I mean, certain part of this is, uh, sort of feedback for you, but this is just the tremendous, and, and the concern is always that you get worked out. Do you, someone help me down?
Not yet, I'll let you know.
But that's not true, but that's okay, I won't believe it, see what he said.
But I, but I do worry about my, my administrators.
That's true, of course, yeah.
That's again, why, um, and, and the teachers, but the administrators have not had a break, and so, you know, when they say I'm gonna take a day, I'm like, please take a day.
Yeah.
Because this, uh, this cannot, you can't keep up.
Right. Thank you.
Anything you wanna discuss under the COVID update?
Um, I'm happy to take questions, uh, because I, I know that there's been a lot of communication about COVID and how it impacts our schools, and I also know that very recently it's been some significant changes in what's gonna happen next. Um, so if it's okay with you, rather than say more on that topic, I'll just take any questions that you might have.
It's probably way too soon to talk about graduation, or is it the expectation that we just can't do it again?
A good question.
We're still a couple months off, and things are changing rapidly, it seems.
Yeah, it's, it's a very good question, because the governor is now talking about, you know, opening up indoor events, uh, March first is one date, March nineteenth is another date, um, but what I tell everyone all the time is that when it comes to how the governor's statements impact our schools, we do wait for DPH, Department of Public Health, and State Department of Education to interpret it for schools. So, we are happy to follow his lead, when he says he feels that it's safe based on science, then we're happy to follow his lead, but we do wanna get direction from DPH and SDE, so there'll probably be a bit of a lag between whatever statement he makes and whatever we end up doing. But, yeah, I mean, I would love to be able to say, we can all gather for graduation, everybody's gonna have to gather in family groups, and we'll stay separate. But, you know, that's where I'm gonna call the police department and say, how do I get all these people onto campus without running into each other? And, uh, you know, how do I get them back out without running into each other? So, it's a lot more than just sitting and see sick graduation, but we'll do whatever we can. I will say this year though, and I will say this to parents of seniors as we move into the, into April, we cannot do what we did last time with changing, changing, changing right up until the last minute, and that was because we were getting such different directions. It was brand new, the, the whole thing was brand new, nobody knew what to do, and the directions kept changing less than weekly. Every few days we'd get new directions about graduation, we can't do that, we're, at some point, we're gonna have to put a stake in the ground and say, this is what we're doing in Old Saver.
I think based on feedback from, um, last year's graduation parade, regardless of what happens, I think the parade was such a positive thing, that that should be incorporated, you know?
Yeah, wasn't that wonderful?
It did, it did certainly end on a high note, on that question, and that was such a, you know, regardless, you know, and I had a graduating senior last year, you know, and you picture in your head what your kid's graduation looks like, you know, um, and it was just, you know, after all of it, that was just such a, it was like a big exhale, that was, is how I felt, was like, you know, like this is what you want your kids to feel is.
Not believable.
Right, and I'm sure Jim, yeah, Jim had a graduating senior last year too.
Yeah, it was very, that was, that was, again, that community feel, right? And it takes a crisis to kind of create that feeling.
It's one of those things where we probably should have done it a long time ago anyway, but we were forced into the situation due to the circumstances, so, just thing overall.
Well, you know, if you'd said that to me a few years ago, I would've said, what? Why would you do that? These are little kids, and then, of course, there I am riding in the parade thinking, oh my God, look, there's so, there's so and so's, I'm sure it was like that for, for the kids, it was like a holiday.
It's great watching, it's great watching. I was just cheering everybody on with your new rod, it was great.
Fantastic, it was a good feeling.
Yeah, it was, for sure.
So, go ahead, George.
I did a question about COVID, so, so the, uh, so, I'll offer the new guidelines for vaccination for educators, right? So, they can have a special, special clinic, hopefully, and so presumably March first is separate clinical for educators, and I guess cafeteria workers and bus drivers as well.
So, educators is a very broad term, um, it's going to include daycare workers, childcare.
Okay.
Preschool, uh, our before and after program people, folks at the Y who do that work, uh, private schools, public schools.
Okay.
Bus drivers, uh, and it's anybody in public schools who goes into buildings.
So, like our ma, I was gonna ask that sort of our maintenance people, like our janitorial staff and our maintenance staff, because they certainly.
Yeah, absolutely, secretaries, the RIT people who go in and fix things, yeah, it's pretty comprehensive, it's a big group.
I mean, would, it'd be really convenient if this place over here would, or some place.
That's the plan.
That right?
That is the plan, so that they'll continue to vaccinate, um, here, I, they haven't worked out all the details yet. They were, we're kind of giving them till Friday, 'cause it, it was kind, it was news to them too. So, the regional and local health departments were, I was called into a meeting on Sunday, um, to tell me what the plans were, and then on Monday at eleven o'clock, we had a meeting with, um, Department of Public Health and State Department of Ed, uh, for superintendents, and at the same time, I guess, the regionals were getting their, their briefing on it, we all found out together. So, they're still reeling with the sort of change of, of philosophy. They're gonna keep their second dose vaccines, I believe, on Saturday, and again, this is subject to change, so anything I say right now, CRAD and emergency management could change it. They're going to temporarily move over, because they're supposed to get all educators done in the month of March, they're gonna move over to, to, to going to educator vaccines, and then go back to the fifty-five plus, because fifty-five plus opens on Monday as well.
Right.
But meanwhile, there are other clinics that I think are just gonna continue with their fifty-five plus. So, yeah, their, their goal, and I have to say they're very efficient, is just to get all the communities that they represent done for educators, that educators term, quickly.
How, how often is this place open?
Uh, this week it's Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, that's been the pattern, uh, for a couple of months now, month and a half now. Uh, but, I mean, they could be open more if they could get more vaccines, it's all dependent upon how much, and they don't know what they're gonna get for vaccine till the Friday before. So, you go on Friday, and all of a sudden, all these appointments open up, and then.
And they, they call, um, the emergency management team called, I was scheduled for one day, and I don't know if they got more vaccines or people didn't show up, but I gotta call four days ahead of the appointment saying, at eight o'clock at night saying, we're here, we've got extra doses, do you wanna come and get it now? Uh, and, and I did, I came down, and when I was here, they were on the phone calling other people, saying, so, I, I don't, I couldn't tell if they got more or people didn't show up, but they were really.
Could've been either, yeah, it could've been either, and we've had, we've had staff members experience that too, you get a phone call saying, can you come down right now? Because they cannot, you know, people were saying, but that, they're not supposed to be vaccinating, and I said, you cannot waste a vaccine. The vaccine is open, the vials open, and you can't waste it. So, the pressure is on them to get the appointments in, get everybody registered in the VAMs, get you vaccinated, and not waste a single dose of vaccine. So, yeah, they're gonna start calling people at night and saying, come down, of course, and I, I commend them for doing.
Tremendous work.
They, they really, it's really impressive.
Yeah, I've taken my mother twice through the line, she had both her vaccines there, just so well done. She's one of those people that had to wait thirty minutes by the ambulance, and.
They were, I was one of those people too, and I have to say I was nervous about it, because I've had anaphylaxis again. But I'll tell you, they were wonderful, I mean, they parked me behind the, next to the ambulance, behind the police car, and an EMT said, you have any problem, just lean on the horn, don't get out of the car, we'll be here. And then she proceeded to knock on my window about every eight minutes, for forty minutes, to make sure I was having no problem.
Yeah, here.
Here.
Oh, yeah.
It was really impressive, very impressive.
Ellen, did you have a question, Colin?
So, Jan, in terms of the daycares, uh, are you coordinating, um, the staff and all, there's private daycares and there's, you know, what better word?
So, I'm coordinating for, uh, all of our bus drivers, including the delivery drivers that we use, so M and J Plus, there's some others, uh, and all of our staff, including substitutes. Scott Martinson from CRAD and, and emergency management, I believe, are coordinating. Again, this is subject to change, right now I've just been asked to pull my list together. But I think that's because CRAD knows our community so well, they know exactly who they need to reach out to, I think in other communities, superintendents are gathering those names. I'm really glad that that work will get done by CRAD, because I have no way of checking those lists and who should be on them and who shouldn't be on them, and they're not my employees, so, but I think that's gonna get coordinated, you know, Saver can do that, but stay tuned, they have until Friday to kind of announce what their finalized plan is.
Is there an order with educators, with people working in special programs, with, it's not so particular?
No, what the state has done, um, with this last plan is taken out all those subgroups, it's just done away with the co-morbidities and the exposure, it's just straight age. And for us, it's age plus the fact that you're an educator, so you don't need to be a certain age, but, uh, sorry, I said that wrong. So, you don't need to be a certain age if you're an educator, you do need to be a certain age, but that's it, everything else has been taken out of.
Been able to stack the building. What's with that?
Oh, we planned carefully, our second dose will be given on Saturday, so it has been given. That gives people time to recover. And this clinic only runs in the afternoon after school closes, so. You know, um, I was saying, I texted the chief today and said the eleventh and twelfth are professional development days, if you wanna run all day clinics, you probably could, if they get the vaccine, this is the problem with the whole process, and I'm not sure, I don't think there's an answer. But you don't know till Friday how many vaccines, you can ask for two thousand, you may get five hundred, you may get eight hundred, you don't know. So, then you quickly, they quickly open up slots.
And some of it is based on how much of the previous allocation that you actually use.
Right, so use it all is their motto, so you can get more, but then it's also just how much is coming into the state, which is, we all know from watching the news, has been impacted by weather.
Right.
You know, and other issues, so, um, you know, so it's, it's been tricky, nothing, nothing can be, you can plan a lot, but then you can't really hit go until the last minute, you know?
Did you have a question, Eileen?
I was gonna say, do you think, it's unfortunate it's so random, you know, because.
Unfortunately, it's so random, you know, because whenever you can get something, you gotta get it. You know, you're not gonna be like, oh, wait till Sabre opens, right? Because you will not get in there, even if you're an educator, I imagine, right, Jan?
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I think I would describe it as just urgent. It's always urgent because you can only go so far with your planning until you know what you're getting.
I think Wesleyan opened up a lot of slots.
Yeah, I, I think increasingly what they're telling us, and this is some gleaningness from all the community calls that I'm on, we're just gonna see that increasingly the vaccine will become more available over time. It's just sort of this, I hate to say it this way, but I'm joking, it's like Hunger Games. You know, people are sitting with their fingers poised over the keyboard at midnight, waiting for the thing to open and hit send. Because everybody, you know, I think everybody's been so stressed and on tenterhooks for so long, they just want relief. People come through the vaccine crying, you know, because it's, I can't believe. They feel like they're being delivered.
It's certainly irrational for sure.
I was gonna say, also, Jan, you did a great job on your vaccine friends.
Oh, thank you.
No, because I watched you and what happens is that you asked a very pointed question, but you were very diplomatic.
Yes, you did.
Not these other towns can do it. And you were very diplomatic and like, oh, you know, I respect what you do. And superintendents make decisions for the interest of them.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna write, Ms. Baker complimented Ms. Bruck here on her national media presence.
National media presence. I was wondering if you didn't realize that? Because when you had said that, I was like, oh, it's a national show, it's very impressive.
I did not realize it until my husband told me it was a national show. That was at 11, at the board meeting, we were late that night. And I had 11 o'clock on lying in bed saying, what did I just do?
Well, you did an excellent job.
Yes.
Now I'm gonna have to find it.
Oh, we've got it. Listen.
All right, definitely.
I did know your data.
Yeah, questions, yeah.
Yeah, I was excited, you did very good job. Any other questions, comments, thoughts about COVID before we move on? Go ahead, Aileen.
So will any, anybody refuse or has anybody expressed that they will refuse to get vaccinated?
Few people, very, very small number.
What's our mitigation plan for that, if there's any, or there?
There really isn't at this time. That's being discussed at the DPH meetings and the CSE meetings. They have their, the State Department of Education has their attorney on all our calls. And she's been very careful to say, you know, these situations have to be held by, you have to deal with them on an individual basis. And I know some companies are incentivizing people. We haven't had to. I mean, we are certainly going to have herd immunity. I think the percentage is gonna be 90% or more.
That's great.
Good news. Thanks.
Other thoughts or comments on the COVID update?
Have you seen reactions to second doses? Have you had reactions to second doses?
Nothing major. And in talking with the folks at the clinic, I think that's been pretty much true all along. You know, some rashes, some fever, chills, everything that has been described as anticipated, expected, and typical.
You're already at your first.
Yes.
I have a question. This is just sort of something to think about. When the plan for graduation is made, if it is a, if they do have the opportunity to gather in public, might there be some consideration given to seniors to go on remote learning for two weeks prior to graduation? So that there's not a situation where if there is a positive case that there's a cohort that may be required to quarantine for graduation? Just might be something to consider.
And give examples.
Yeah, maybe even in advance of exam, I don't know, yeah. Just something, yeah.
Certainly a good question.
Yeah.
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 Or, I mean, could they administer qualtrics at the, I don't know, I don't know. Anyway, I have some problems on them, but yeah, because I was just, yeah, how do you limit the impact for the?
Of a potential, yeah, of a potential positive on the overall group.
Yeah.
Interesting.
My only, my initial thought is if potential movement of cohort still exists during graduation, I'm not so sure that graduation, that that would not be, there'd be so much of a hurdle that I don't think logic gathering.
Well, in theory, it could happen at any time, right? I mean, it's, if there's one, if there's one person who tests positive, whoever they contact, trace two, would have to quarantine.
So what I'm thinking as I'm sitting here, I'm trying to think of the directive that we've gotten from the State Department right now, subject to change. They don't want us closing schools in a preemptive, in a preemptive way.
Right.
They're looking very scornfully at that. And I, and I can appreciate and understand that. But still, maybe some, maybe something that isn't quite as much as that, but something about messaging in those last two weeks? Because their kids aren't getting sick at school.
Right.
They're getting sick outside and then they're coming in sick, which is causing the quarantining. And who knows, will we have 16-year-olds vaccinated by then? I don't know.
But it's the elderly relatives, right, at those events.
Right, that would be concern. And assuming that the elderly relatives have all been vaccinated, assuming that the kids have been vaccinated and depending upon when they're vaccinated, we're being told you don't have to quarantine two to 12 weeks after the vaccine. So after your second dose of vaccine, two weeks later, when you're supposed to be at 100% immunity, you do not need to quarantine after an exposure unless you're showing symptoms, is what we're being told right now. So it could be the sweet spot right there, right? It could be possible.
Yeah.
We'll have to think about timing that.
For your purposes, as more, how do you feel about your response to COVID? I've been from Ms. Jones.
I think, I think, I mean, it's already been said, you know, through other mediums, that I think Jan has led a tremendous response. The fact that we were able to return full-time to school October 5th, right? That was the date.
October 5th.
And have effectively remained in full-time except for, you know, I, and that's, you know, that whole identification of what does the cohort consist of? And how, what do they need to do? I mean, I, I think it's been really remarkable.
Thank you.
And have you felt that you've gotten from the board the support that you need to continue operating like that, Jan? Is there, are there things that the board can do to be, you know, more supportive or more engaged or?
No, I think that the one thing I needed from all of you this year, and you've all provided it, is if you, if some of you have heard information that maybe was misinformation, seen it posted somewhere, had a question that someone asked you, you brought it to me, that was what I needed this year. Because there was so much information going out that it's hard to kind of safeguard that it's accurately being represented. So that's been great. And then just sort of allowing us to continue to have our meetings remotely has been helpful, allowing the administration to miss a lot more meetings than they typically do has been very helpful. And just, you know, I'm not concerned. I know I can send you a letter saying, well, this minor catastrophe hit today and I don't get a lot of, wait, what's going on? You know, people are just, you've just been really reasonable in, you know, the questions that you have for me and the information you're providing to me. So no, the short answer is, I'm good. You've done a great job too.
Good. I feel like it's been going extremely well on both sides. And I appreciate the questions that we received from board members when you guys reached out to me and reached out to Jan, you know, good questions. And everybody's been very engaged, which is also good. Like this is an opportunity, you know, when you're online to, you know, disconnect. I know, you know, work, I've got certain needs, I've gotta be engaged, you know, 100%. And then there's other ones where I'm, you know, doing five other things at the same time. You know, so I appreciate everybody's engagement. And, you know, I think prepared, that you all come prepared with good questions. You know, thoughtful.
And as board chair, Tara, I've had to, I mean, you've had to take a lot of phone calls from me and had to deal with a lot of, you know, can you give me a call? Very crazy hours. And so, you know, you may not all be aware of how much she has to communicate or get communication from me even when she's away on vacation. So, and that's very, very helpful. Thank you.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it. Good experience, go ahead, Aileen.
I was gonna say that, I'll just speak for myself, but I think it's tremendous and I trust in Jan, it's amazing what he's doing. And I think if you were questioning, you know, your own thoughts, you know, through Tara or know something to be like, but it seems as if it's just cycle Sabre, but it's really like, it's remote. You wanna know what? If it snows, we're so. You know, put on your boots and go.
It's really remarkable because you, right, it, it almost seems as though your full-time job has become leading a pandemic response. And yet, at the same time, you, you have also been maintaining your full-time job of being in charge of this entire, you know, district. And so it's, it's, I mean, I, I think it, it's easy to underestimate how much work. And just even the, the thought process and your response to ambiguity and all the information that you've had to take in and make decisions about that are all like even disparate subjects. So, I mean, I just, I applaud. And, and to do it well has just been remarkable. It's, I think you've definitely been what parents have needed. You've been what administrators have needed. You've been what teachers have needed. You've been what even, you know, the emergency response organization has needed. And, and all the while, also bringing education forward. So I think that's, you know, no small feat.
Yeah, I just wanna echo this, and it's very well said. I mean, it's amazing what you've done this year with the school system and running a school in spite of all the craziness and madness. The layered on responses and, you know, people that you've touched.
Thank you. When we get to strategic plan, we'll talk about how having those strong foundations make that possible. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Just quickly, I think for the Wednesday, you know, Wednesday, from the emergency management, you know, information that gets sent out, it was a while back and that, I think, Jan, you were like, well, I'm gonna put this in there so people can see there's an education component here. You know, because they would talk a lot about, you know, what's happening in the town, who got impacted. And I think, maybe we had a board meeting or something where you're like, yeah, we're gonna put something in there about lunches, we're gonna put. So people look at it and they see, otherwise they wouldn't learn about it, even if they don't have any kids in school.
Community effort message, everybody sent it together.
They recognize that that was important, Jan, to me there.
I had to take you back on that. It's incredible what you've done, Jan, all while trying to keep the morale of administrators and the school staff up. And yet, I know that it's so hard, so to still have them know that they are listened to and supported is huge.
Other questions or comments before we move on to our climate update?
It just, I'm just coming, I mean, I actually, I'm gonna come back to, and the question, I think you were asking whether, you know, if the impact of COVID on us, right, the board did. And I, I mean, just a couple of thoughts on that. I mean, clearly, I think we've mentioned earlier on, Tara's been great in terms of the Zoom meetings. And I think I had a good point in terms of just basically, Tara basically just said, you know, can I run into a question or draw up a question? Then I think that sort of the purpose of not being proud is sent to us. But I think, again, I mentioned earlier on, two aspects to that. One, I think, you know, because of what Jen has done in keeping the schools open, the, the level of learning in the school has, it's pretty much uniform, right? I mean, it's one of the school districts where you, you see this high absentee rate of people who try and be online and so on. I don't think we really have that problem here because it's within, you know, blessing per person. So that really has made our jobs so easy. I can't imagine the district with to deal with that issue where important part of education is a discussion that the board has. And we don't really need to do that out of necessity. And I think that reflects a lot, a lot part of what Jen has done. But I think, one of the, the other comment, and it's totally separate, and that is, I feel like we're, I'm just hoping that we're not, the, the, that somehow we're filling the need, right? Because, because, you know, if teachers need something from us, or administrators from us, that they can still get it from us. I mean, just think of all the things in the past that we used to do. We used to prove trips abroad, well, of course, no trips of happiness, of course, none of that even happened, right? But, but we, we've got almost very low presentation of the teacher, very low presentations from, asking things from us. And I'm not sure whether because it just started happening or there's an opportunity, but are we, are we not doing that and it's getting backed up? Then somehow we're not, we're not doing our part either, right? So I don't know what that is. I mean, I mean, clearly, the trips are something else, like I get that. But if a new book needs to be approved, would you, something else?
Oh, I'd like to point that out because yes, we will have those presentations in the spring. They will involve teachers. And you've had some staff at other events, you just, it's just hard to remember that they're there because they've been remote. So you had the social workers, guidance counselors. You know, we've had, back in the fall, we had some people attend, you know, very briefly. I think Jeremy Taylor came to an event and, you know, so we've had some of it, nowhere near what you're used to.
Exactly, exactly. You're a little bit, yeah.
Because there've been so few educational presentations, no travel. But there will be, that, that is still going on and it will resume in the spring with some course change requests. As a matter of fact, I think it might even be tentatively scheduled for the next meeting. So it's still happening. It's happening more or less, though.
I understand, but I just wanna make sure that we're not.
You need us to be more engaged, that just, you know, raise your hand.
Exactly, they need something from us, you know.
So yes, I, I completely understand that. And I don't think anybody feels like that you're not, you're not engaged. I mean, I obviously don't talk to everybody about this, but like the administration, I know doesn't feel that way. You know, we talk about you and we, and we talk about, we'll be at district leadership team. We'll say, oh, let's not forget, that's gotta go to the board first. So we, you're still part of our process, you're still part of our thinking. I know if you don't disconnect it, but it's, we're still following our original processes. We don't talk about you.
As little as possible, actually.
But towards the reason I asked the question is, just to focus the board for a minute, right? This meeting, right, is to talk about your functioning together with another and moving forward the initiatives of the district. And then also for a review of superintendent's progress on our goals and the opportunity to do that feedback mid-year. I just don't want you guys to focus on, are we gonna do graduation this way or? You know, because that's like the substantive topic, like how to respond. So this is how are you, how is it affecting your functioning?
Yeah, I understood that.
No, it's good, I think we need to. Yeah, because I'm, like, I'm like, oh, yeah, what are they gonna do? But I find myself like, I know.
Exactly right.
That's one, yeah. But I think, you know, I think before we started doing the remote meetings, it was, for me anyway, I can only speak for myself, it was, it was a bit more challenging. Of course, I was, was a little bit audio issues and mute, non-mute was locking up. And it was just so frustrating. But it's, you know, I kind of feel this rhythm that we've all had now. I don't feel like, I've certainly not inhibited asking any questions. I think, you know, you've got many compliments about how you maintain the order and run the meetings. You do an excellent job with that. So, you know, I don't feel like I'm stifled at all. And I, I love this. I'm actually looking forward to, you know, I can't believe I'm saying it, but you know, for so many years, I'm like, wow, but I'm ready to go out again. So, yeah, so I think how we function at meetings from my perspective is productive. I think, I think they're all very valuable.
Let's see, Eileen, you've got a comment.
I just wanted to get into some, just quickly, a subject, subjective topic. What Cindy was saying about morale and teachers, um, something that I think I probably didn't realize really does impact teams as an educator. Here, and I was gonna ask you, and I think she already doing, it's like giving in teachers boxes, something, it could be something more to that. You know what I mean, it could be chocolate, it could be something else, thank you for everything that you do. And the only reason why I'm saying that is because it's clearly, they put things in boxes and I was like, and it was, it was really pleasant. It's like a way of saying, it doesn't have to be cognitive, it doesn't have to be cerebral, it doesn't have to be intellectual, it just says, thanks. You know, and you get in your car and you're like, wow, that's really cool, I'm gonna have that chocolate chip cookie, and I'm eating it all the way home. You know, but it is something that just, it impacts you differently. You know, so, you know, enough paperwork or enough Zoom stuff, but what about, wow, you ever just thinking about us? And so that's just an idea and I don't know if we do it, you know, sometimes they put up with anything and they just do things that are just
Yeah.
Something that just people like to and as well.
A way of communicating the best thanks to the staff.
Exactly right, and it's usually chocolate.
Isn't it amazing that chocolate chip cookie will do it?
And and the thing is, and I guess maybe something that takes a time, that they put a little label on it, and what we do, those things matter.
So those things have to be more administrative, but from the board level, it'd be great.
I understand that they matter to the teacher.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea and I'm I'm very supportive of that. Yeah, because it is hard, especially not.
Local business that.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a surprise.
Climate updates because, I mean, the question is about morale. Nice. That's kind of a great, great.
That's a great segue.
Good segue.
Thank you. Yeah, so to the climate update.
So, as you know, because we just presented, the administrators just presented this to you on January twenty-sixth, we really have shifted the way we think about climate this year because climate has shifted so much. And it's been a balancing act, to the point about leading a COVID emergency, but also leading a school district. We've dealt with the urgent, the health and safety and the immediate um stressors that are happening right in front of us um now. But at the same time, we have to think about the long term. And so the question that we're posing here, are there academic losses? What will that look like? Are there um social and emotional impacts? What does, what does that look like now? But what is that gonna look like a year from now or two years from now? And so planning long-term to respond to those things has been part of our thinking. And this, of course, is primarily, I'm thinking about students, but of course, it's staff as well. Climate is far more complex because we don't have everybody here on campus. We're running both remote and in-person schools because parents still have the opportunity to keep their children home if they want to. That's granted by the state. And I think that climate's gonna continue to be more complex for years to come. It's gonna be more hands-on uh probably than it ever was before. You know, we have an additional social worker in our budget for next year. In part, we'll be able to respond uh because of that additional staff, which allow us to have a social worker dedicated to each building. The challenges um have been created by distance, you know, distance learning, masks, screens, uh desks separated, people separated, the stress that that causes in families and isolation caused by quarantining. The assets that we have, the reason why I think we have met with relative success is we have a very seasoned administrative team. We have a relatively seasoned staff. We have a strategic plan that just creates a solid foundation. Where are we going? We're going that way. Don't let all of this stuff that's intruding keep us from going that way. It may slow us down, but we're still going that way. And that has been helpful and then that's all within the context of a supportive community, which has allowed us to 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 address some of these concerns. And what we have found that have been solutions so far is finding out where people are, you know. So um screeners for kids and finding out where where are their elevated risks. Some of those numbers have been concerning, you know, and some groups of students, we have concerns about how elevated the the risk is right now. But we have the resources to respond to that in schools and with our youth and services group. And also, we now have federal funding coming, uh, with the SR2 money that's coming our way that we're hoping to impart, we're planning to use um to deal with some of these issues by keeping kids connected, even through summer programming, not traditional summer school, summer programming. Uh, and into the fall, continuing to provide um attention to students and connections to staff. That we've had, our kids have had access to people, they've had access to our personnel, whether they're home or here in person. They've they've not had to feel isolated and when we, when someone's choosing to isolate, we're doing everything we can to reach out to them and keep them connected. I worry about the children who have been unenrolled altogether. Parents obviously have the right to do that and to homeschool, but um I'm concerned and I'm I'm hoping that that's something that the state will take up and look at the numbers associated that across the state.
I'm sorry, is that a shoe here?
We have, we did back in the fall, when we first opened, people were very nervous about sending their children to schools and and they unenrolled them. And we've had some return, but not all.
Because they have the option to do virtual learning.
And they chose not to do that.
Jen, will they unenroll their children?
That's the end of um any way that you, as a school superintendent or any staff, we, there's no way you can know what happens to those kids unless the parents volunteer that information, right?
The law is very weak on that. You know, we send us a letter saying we're here to support and help, you know, let us know what you're working on and we don't really have much to back that up.
Not even from like the State Department, DCF, and you know.
Their, their hands are tied apparently on that as well, so you have children out there at school that we didn't.
Yeah, it's just have to sign an attestation that they're teaching their children at home and there's not any oversight from the State Department of Education nor is any uh fitted by, so that the district can exercise in any need. So as a result, some kids are getting awesome programs, right? And and some probably are not, but there's no way for the district administration to monitor that.
But we are, you know, providing the interventions, uh, we plan to give a screener again. We're identifying students who need additional support uh continuously. It's a cycle, continuously doing that and communicating the families. And so um those are things that we're doing now that I don't necessarily know that we will see the benefit of for a while, but I do think that that they will be benefited by it. Just the fact that we've been in school since September, uh, you know, in hybrid and then uh in fall, I think has been really positive for I wish we could be doing more, doing more of the gatherings, seeing kids in crowds and stuff, but every time that happens off campus, we end up sending everybody home for a few days. So so I'm not that interested in not seeing that happen. But um as far as climate and the emotions and morale of staff, I would characterize it, and this is from my perspective. It's it's based somewhat on surveys and things, but it's been a roller coaster ride, you know. Right now, I think one of the things that is causing the biggest stress, so vaccines are here.
Huge.
Blood off of everybody's minds, right? But I think that one of the things that's causing significant stress right now is this sort of loose interpretation of how parents can remove students from the classroom for a period of time. They're in, they're out, they're in, they're out. That was not the intention of the state allowing parents to um uh have, keep their children remote. It was meant to be to address, you know, particular health issues in the family or or things related to COVID. That is another situation that unfortunately has really transitioned a lot. So, you know, because the school districts are not all doing the same thing and some have been remote for a while and some are hybrid, families are just picking up and saying, we're going to Florida for a month and my child will be coming in remote. And our our perspective is, we see the value in family travel. We're not suggesting that that's not a valuable experience, but to keep moving your child in and out of remote in the classroom is not good for kids, it's really not good for the classroom, for the other kids in that classroom because teachers are having to pivot and respond. Easier to do if you already had a Google Classroom up and running because you have some children in your classroom who are remote, but we have some classrooms where there are no um no children remote, there's no Google Classroom up and running and to ask a teacher to pivot from morning of and the night before, it's not fair. Um, I am gonna message that on my parent home call tomorrow. Please, as April vacation approaches, please consider, A, if you're traveling, following all the rules, you have to do that since it's back. And B, please don't pull kids out so that they can be taking their classes from, you know.
Right.
Mount Snow, it's not, it's not, it's not good for anybody. And I also, in a long one, would like to say, I don't think it's great to teach kids that school is a kind of a commitment. It's a commitment. And so I worry, what is the message that might be uh going out to kids there? So that's what, that's what teachers, I meet with the uh executive board of the teachers union about every five weeks and have been doing that. Actually, I've been doing that before this year, but and we talk very specifically about those things. And that right now is a real stressor for them.
So Jen, is that, is that state guidance or guideline or do we have to adhere to that? Or can district by district make our own policies, rules, whatever? And can we say, no, this you, I, this is, this is so hard, I.
No, you really can't.
It's so complicated.
If you push back, if you say, sorry, we're not gonna allow this, you, we need to go three or four days to turn this around. And we have said that, like, you can't just expect us to turn this on a dime. This is a big thing. And the teacher, all the time the teacher spends trying to get a child up and running on a Google Classroom who's never done that or hasn't done it a long time, doesn't know the routine. You know, those kids who are staying home consistently, they know the routine, you know, when to sign on. But kids who are pivoting to that need some training uh from the teacher who is doing that in the morning of while trying to get class going. And that's really, really hard. There isn't a whole lot in the in the original language that allows for it now. Certain attorneys um have said to us and put in writing, um, you know, you can take a reasonable amount of time to get this coordinated and organized, you can't expect people to turn it off. But on the other hand, teachers don't wanna leave kids out, right, either? So it's a, it's a, it's a dilemma, it's an ethical one. Because they're they're being put in a really tough position. I don't wanna make it sound like it's rampant, it's.
Yeah.
But how, Jen, how are the parents responding when you say, you know, we can't turn this around on a dime? And, you know, you can't tell us on Tuesday and expect your kid to to Google in on on Wednesday? Are are they stepping back at all and saying, well, you know, maybe we really don't need to go to Mount Snow, maybe? Or or does it fall on deaf ears?
I haven't asked the administrators that because primarily administrators are trying to intervene. I haven't asked that question recently. I think people are still doing what they do and they always have, Jen, you know. There's always a family who says, we do our ski week in February, no matter what you're doing with the school.
That's right, because.
We're taking our kids out and we're gonna call them in.
Right.
That happens and and I'm not judging that. But this is, this is one step more, this is, we're taking our kids out and please educate them.
Right, that's what.
And that's.
And that's what I'm surprised is stressing the part of the teacher because of exactly what you said, trying um therefore to prepare for the kids in front of them and then then they have this and it's, it's really so difficult.
It is, it is.
Yeah, and the absences now, there's not much you can do either. So if, even if they were full and have a number of absences, um.
There's not anymore.
There's no teaching that at all.
Fortunately, I'm glad you brought up absences, we just got our state report, our absentee rate is incredibly low. So while I'm talking about this problem, I don't wanna make it sound like it's pervasive. It's been well into the nineties for um for attendance this year.
Well, I I think that, and I just was thinking out in the community, I think parents and the whole community are so appreciative of the work that you and the and the whole staff has done that has allowed the kids to be back. And you just have to turn the news on and listen, I was teasing you about what's happening in California, but it's not funny that you've got parents picketing schools saying, open the schools, you know, ninety miles away in New York with those parents are going through. I mean, I I just think that rightly so, they are appreciated and it's been good.
But no, and it's, I think it's been good for everybody. I think even staff members who are really frightened to come back in the fall and even parents who are frightened to send their kids back, we proved it could be done. You know, we're not the only ones, it happened all over the state and the nation, but we proved that it could be done. But we're very fortunate that we had the resources to make it happen and we could get them. I I keep, I think I told you back in April, I already told Julie to get in line for masks. But in April, before anybody knew that was even gonna be a thing, we knew that we better, everybody, we get supply and demand, we're good capitalists, right? We knew darn well that we had to get in line and then the next thing was Plexiglas, I can't remember who it was, might have been Julie or somebody said, we gotta get Plexiglas. So it just, you just have to be thinking on your feet. And it's the same thing with dealing with problems now, when you're talking about morale, it's, the problems are very different from what they've been in before and you have to keep pivoting and switching to the next, to the next problem and how to deal with it. So tomorrow, my parent call, we're gonna mention again, we're gonna create some language for administrators to share, saying, be fair, you know, let's be fair about this.
That's a good word.
I think that's reasonable, I think that's absolutely reasonable.
Anything else on?
So I was gonna say, other comments about climate that you wanted to cover, Jen, before we get questions?
No, um, no, I just, again, fluid, changeable, uh, short-term and long-term would be the way I would describe the way we're.
Everything, throw it against the wall and it's all there.
Yep.
Eileen, say it.
Not everybody could do what Jen's done for a smaller district, but imagine what these larger districts are having to handle like a heartburn, you know, and there's just difficult ways to to put your pulse, you know, you're putting on the pulse, you know, people not, people not wanting to make home visits because of COVID. And there's so many things that districts, you know, might have done for people and so it's just, I, it, there's sort of.
Yeah, and that's why my my response on that national news program was very honest. I can't, I'm not a superintendent in Chicago or Collier County or Hartford, Connecticut, I'm a superintendent, all Sabra. And uh and and the the context from of my world is different.
Typical lessons that you put out or the best practices um are probably something that superintendents can trust the state can bring for a new, 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 by, as they can, um, because they're definitely to each other in terms of their own problem solving and their own thinking about what they can do to make it work in terms of the second generation.
You know, I keep thinking that, again, silver lining, and I don't wanna birdwalk too much, but my parents always talk about the togetherness of World War II, like the way the nation was together. And I've always been very like envious of what that must have felt like. I think this is what that felt like. Because my fellow superintendents, we all, we're on the phone constantly with each other, we're in meetings once a week with each other regional, regionally, just to get the best practices from them. Best idea, because you cannot do this sort of big lift by yourself.
That's a, I think I was gonna say that we all talked about, you know, English as a second language. And I get a phone call from my grandmother, she'll be yelling at me, she's like, this will open, probably five o'clock in the morning because they don't understand what's coming through on a telephone call, or, I don't know, or the bus, where's the bus? No, there aren't any buses today. Um, and so that, I think, you know.
Maybe this is our, I I don't, again, don't mean to minimize what people went through then, but sort of the closest I've ever gotten to that experience of you have to pull together.
You have a question? So questions or comments, other questions or comments for Jen, to her climate update?
So I do, it's somewhat related, somewhat not. I think about the um the population, you know, we have so many different languages that we're dealing with. And I know, you know, the memos that come home are translated to Spanish and and, you know, I worry about those other families that don't speak Spanish and don't speak English and how are we, Google Translate everything, I I, you know, how do, how do we, that feeling of connectiveness which of course impacts morale and climate and all of that, you know. What's your sense about where we are with that?
I'd say we are doing better than we ever did and we have a ways to go as well, we need more resources in front. And so um you could see that, I was showing Karen earlier that I did a companion piece, I asked uh stakeholders, um staff members to tell us the one thing they'd like to see in the new strategic plan because that was an exercise that the guiding coalition went through. And support and resources for ELL students came up third or fourth uh in in um in things that they felt were important. So we do now have a translation service for meetings, um, for, you know, for PPTs, for communications, uh, just regular parent meeting. Um, we do, we have increased our EL staff, as you know, and we issued phones to them when we closed down last spring. We issued phones to our EL staff, so they make phone calls to us in the morning for translations or indicate. My emails uh go out in English and Spanish at four in the morning, it was because they just, I I I don't wanna wake up my EL teachers that go in the morning to make phone calls. But um at least those communications go out that way. So we do have supports in place, everybody's comfortable using Google Translate at this point, um, but there's still more that we could be doing. It's just, it's very expensive proposition. But it's also really important that we keep those people engaged. I, the EL teachers have been amazing, they think that, and picking up that phone and taking phone calls about similar topics, you know, when the bus is coming, is there lunch today?
Yeah.
I'm actually giving, you know, with, I think that's just, just my own, like, professional way of looking at it. When I look at a Google Translate, I'm like, this is so literal, you know, that there's people out there that are are not even literate. You know, so they're looking at it going, that's so much language, I can't even get through it.
Yeah, you mean they're not literate?
You know, like, yeah, they're not literate, they're only, you know, you look at it and you're like, oh. So I would definitely, you know, take that passion, I'm gonna probably say it that way to make sure that you connect with people and and you have to do the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, we were having great success with like breakfasts for families and bringing them in before. And I'm sure we'll go back to it again, again, courtesy of our EL staff. But I'm sure we'll go back to it because that personal connection, making people feel welcome, is incredibly important to having them forgive your really literal Google translation documents and and still understand that you're trying to communicate with them. and, and still understand that you're trying to communicate with them.
And the other concern, you might get a PPT and you're doing it on Zoom. I'm like, really? And the family's sitting there and, and you can't really interact with them. So it takes that, that sort of special approach to kind of go, let's do it together. Come into the same room, hobby in the same room. You sit there, I'll sit here and look at it because that's just a way for people to feel connected.
And our sensibilities will change on that over time. So far, we've been locked down, no coming in for meetings, none of that, because we want to keep our kids and our teachers healthy. But it's going to change over time, you know, we're going to loosen up over time.
Some words from the field, right, is, are that the Zoom meetings, some cases are, are easier and better for parents, right? Because they don't have to take the whole block of the entire afternoon, right? They can, they can stay at work.
Yep.
Set aside the time. And so in a weird way, it's, it's actually enhanced access participation and access in unexpected ways. He will be keeping those for the people he's working for. And then, you know, being able to do it as a hybrid when we emerge from them.
Yep. And, and staff has found it. I mean, it, yes, it's more complex to try to connect it, to read what people are thinking. But staff has found it to be really convenient because they can attend meetings, whether they're home quarantined or here or in a different building. Yeah, there are components of it we're going to want to keep.
Right.
So, um, do we have anything else on that topic? Or should we go to the board superintendent overview? Do you have a question, Ellen?
So maybe, no, that's right. More of a comment, maybe it's not directly related to climate, but I'm, you know, there's going to be a forensic point at some point around the losses of, it's in terms of what they learned or haven't learned. You touched on it in terms of some strategies, some of the, you can't go forward. You know, certainly I think the board would be interested in to find out from the teacher's perspective and the administrators, from your perspective, what the losses are and how they get mitigated in the years to come, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So, um, that definitely curious, how that gets quantified and, you know, what the school system, the school system will do to kind of make up for.
Yeah, we'll be coming to you. Um, so preliminarily, we have some assessment data on that. And we are surprised by some of the success stories. Particularly, yeah, particularly K eight math. We thought that would just plummet and it did not. We have a few patchy concerns about reading and so we're sort of intensifying our efforts there. Um, but that's based on our STAR data so far. So the SBACK test will be coming, the state tests. They're disconnected from any kind of rating of schools or school districts, but they still give us some data, though the complaint we've always had about those assessments is they don't roll down until it's specifically what do we need to be working on with this particular student? They don't give us that kind of information, but our STAR data does. And our teachers have been, the first few months, we said, let's not, let's not test people. Let's just get them back and going. And so we, we are doing it at an odd time in the year, but we're getting the data that we need to know what to do between now and the next year and then how to continue it. So the how to continue it is the long-term planning. I said to somebody recently, finally getting to do a lot of long-term planning. So, you know, we're thinking, what do we do this summer to keep those kids engaged without taking away their summer, you know? So we had some ideas, maybe it's a night thing, maybe it's once or twice a week at Goodwin and it's outside and it's after the beach. And so we're, we're trying to get our heads wrapped around how to keep them engaged first for emotional reasons, for learning reasons, and then what does it look like? How are we going to use our SR funds over the next, um, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months to maximize impact for kids? So, but more will be coming on that.
So will that be woven into the strategic plan at some point or part of it?
So I think I'd say that the strategic plan considers the impact of COVID, but we tried really hard enough to make the whole plan about COVID because it's a five-year plan and we want it to be much more visionary than that. So far.
I'm looking forward to getting my test on sophomore math because I've really come a long way this year. All right, great. So are we ready to move on to, um, the superintendent's goal for the meeting?
So this, let me mess up a document, um, is I, after our October meeting, I went back to my office and thought, how am I going to keep all of this straight? Like, I, I need to be able to, in the middle of chaos and a pandemic and responding to it, I still am going to need to be able to tell them in the middle of the year and at the end of the year, what I've been doing with my time. So every two weeks, I would lock myself in my office or my home office and just pour down on the paper everything that I had been working on. And then in the last two weeks, Trent and I went back through and like cleaned up stuff that you have dates about and all that nonsense. And it's just much more high level in the way I had organized it. But still, what you are looking up at is a cleaned up version of my notes with the original goals that I had talked to you about October and that was set in October on the left, the intended outcomes in the next column, what, what we will be doing by, by setting that goal and by meeting that goal, action steps taken to date. And then the next column is the component of the evaluation document that you complete about me, the areas of that document, um, some of the personal multiple areas, like the partners that I'm working with, the resources that we need to do it. And then you always ask me about challenges to it. So I included my last column, or here are the challenges that either have risen or have not, and I was anticipating that they might. The first section, uh, which we talked a lot about tonight already, is on climate and what to do to address climate issues. And to me, a stressful emergency situation requires lots of communication. Nobody wants to sit in the house saying, I wonder what's going on. Everybody wants to know what's going on. If there's a fire next to you, like, what's the first thing going on? Where's that for the fire? What's going on? So that's how we approached communication all summer and fall. Um, and now as we're coming out of it, things are easing a little bit, we're backing off a little bit. But those are all, um, those are all things that I have done with teams of people, sometimes large teams, sometimes small partner groups, to make sure that, um, we are, um, keeping morale of everybody, whether it was parents, the kids, the staff, as healthy as it can be. I'll give you a moment to see if you have any questions for me on that particular item. That's two pages.
Amazing, Jan. I mean, this is an amazing amount of work in the middle of doing your job, which is a hard job, not during a pandemic, managing, argument management during a pandemic, communicating without communicating with other people. And yet you put this document together, which is like a very coherent document.
Good.
Um, there was, so, you know, we, I, I think we had that the board structure, we talked about this in the fall, where you don't feel like you have to spend a lot of time.
We've said that several times, yes. Well, you'll see, there are some boo-boos in it, things that we didn't clean up a hundred percent because it was truly all my thoughts on paper every two weeks, just fucked. And then cleaned up afterwards. But the whole point was I wanted you to really get a full picture of, of what, what we're doing, what's going. There are a few things, two ads that are not here, but there, we can talk about them now and somewhere even appropriate for exact access. And next, um, obviously we can't abandon our long-term plan. It's on page three, we start talking about the strategic plan two thousand sixteen, twenty-one. And while we haven't had a lot of time to talk about it at this meeting, it's still going on. It's still being, um, brought to a conclusion in many cases or will be continued in the next plan in other cases.
Still a massive amount of work.
That's a massive amount of work. And, and this has been accomplished by siloing. So for our times now, when I'm back involved in all of these things, before I was just primarily getting, um, updates, mostly from director of curriculum instruction and assessment. And I, I said to her, you're not involved in contact tracing or any of those things. You've got to keep that stuff going while we do that. And now we're ready, the advisory team, we're ready to kind of roll back into it. It feels really good because it feels like I'm an educator again. And then of course, we talked a lot about responding to COVID tonight. And there are a few things that didn't get added in the last few days because that's how COVID goes in our response to it, it's a changing experience. I'm happy to take any questions on any of the sections so far.
Eileen, you got a question?
This is a comment that seems like it's so, I'm seeing everywhere, whether it's students, whether it's staff. The town, um, it's on page three, focus on issues that marginalized members of the community. Yeah.
English language learners, yeah?
That's how that's rolling out. It sounds like it's just going to be integrated into, and yes, that's that school. Not just, you know, presentations, but from some of the reading, the students may, maybe they're not in advisory anymore, but they're bringing that topic. How that's rolling out or how they even decided to make that a topic.
Which, which topic?
She's talking about the, um, the marginalized on page three, the bottom. Focus on issues that marginalized.
Oh, okay. Yep. Yeah, so, um, so there is still advisory and, um, they, they are talking about these topics. Uh, right now advisory is focused on school career in the next few advisories. But, um, they, they are talking about these topics and, and staff is talking about them as well. You know, the, the events of the last twelve months beyond COVID have had powerful impact on, on many people. And so it's just organically been coming up, um, from staff members and from students. And it has in some ways opened their eyes to the way people feel marginalized beyond the obvious, like race, to things like abilities and disabilities and, uh, language concerns and, um, differences that, um, that cause people to have trouble accessing learning or accessing the community. And so it's been, it's been a bit of an eye-opener and it's happening rather organically. And I also see it rolling up into the new strategic plan. Again, we did that, what's one thing you want to see in the new strategic plan? And universally, a predominant response was about equity and access and, uh, and what that means here in Old Sabre. That remains to be seen, what it means here in Old Sabre, but everybody is, lots of people are talking about it.
So did you have a follow-up to that, Eileen?
I was going to say, just going into the, I know that we talked about this a long while back, about maybe it's part of that, um, that guiding thing that all typical schools are going to have type of evaluation, assessment, and stricken, um, probably the topic. I know we just mentioned it maybe when we worked early on in the fall.
Yeah, we talked about doing an audit.
It's entered to this somewhere where it might not have enough of this or, you know, we should probably be doing more training and threshold development or whatever it might be that this. Is that part of, that will be part of what? That that's going to be coming to us in turn. So, you know, that highlight or.
Well, I mean, those are, we'll, we'll talk about that. That's just where we are with the strategic plan. So, and then, you know. It's a special, isn't it? Just had a quick, so a couple of references in one book, one town. Could you, sure. I'm not sure what that's all about.
That, um, that is actually something that is co-chaired by Matthew from the, uh, from Board Selectmen and, uh, Amanda Bauer, Bauer from the Acton Library. And they have pulled, uh, different stakeholders together to start, um, a conversation around a particular book. Again, it's on the same topic of, um, racial divide.
Sure.
And I'm on that committee. And the book that we read is called Deep South, Deep North.
Deep South, yeah, but local writer, Lottie Scott.
It's a local writer, Lottie Scott. I just finished reading it. It's a very quick read and it's, uh, Amanda's now, we've just put a flyer out and she's hoping to start a chat group in the community. We're all going to get together, I think it's March sixteenth at seven o'clock to talk about the book. And Lottie Scott is joining us.
So, so, so the committee is made up of?
Uh, citizens. So it's, um, it, so it's, we have a selectman, we have the live, the head librarian, the superintendent of schools, uh, people from different action, uh, groups in the community, youth and family services. Yeah, so it's kind of a, a broad-based, uh, team of people who now will expand to anyone who's interested in joining in the conversation. So, um, if you go to the Acton Library, um, website, and I can actually probably get a link out to you, if not right now, I can do it tomorrow. I can show you the flyer and you can sign it up.
Yeah, it's far as totally fine. Don't worry about it. Yeah, exactly.
Action.
I just think it's interesting to, you know, people can go about it.
Yeah, so we sent it out today that, or is it going out over the weekend? It's going out over the weekend to parents and staff. You actually might get it then. Trent hit click the board of ed, which hopefully did, you'll get it then. And Acton Library is putting it out across town.
Interesting.
It's in the evening, probably?
Seven o'clock on March sixteenth. So twenty-one, twenty-six strategic plan, which is, is next. And there are some documents on the right side of your folder that you all want with this. But, um, as you know, Karen is your representative to the guiding coalition, which has been.
Nobody else volunteered.
It has been me. Ms. wrote her enthusiastic.
I kept waiting for somebody else to raise their hand.
I volunteered, Colin told you.
Give this a meeting, Karen.
Exactly.
Anyway, so a couple documents in your folder. We're going to segue right into this strategic plan. Unfortunately, because of the snow day last Friday, we, we missed a, a meeting. We would have pushed this process along a little bit more, but we're going to have a meeting this coming Friday. So you're seeing everything that, that the committee has also seen. The master document that we all filled out is here. The surveys that came from, um, that went to students, I think it was grade six to twelve, parents and teachers. So you'll see, if you had time to look through it, you'd see some disparity with, with opinions there. A wide range of opinions, depending if you were a teacher or a student. You al, you also have the, um, we, I think it was the last meeting or maybe the meeting before, we broke up into groups, as you can see, four groups. And we were asked the questions about the data, the focus group data. The whole stack of strategic planning documents. You know, what did you notice when you looked at all the data from the focus groups? What questions do you still have? So you've got that in front of you as well. So we're really, because we have, we've had three meetings, but there is a lot to digest and we're still in the process of disaggregating the data. And hopefully Friday, we'll be able to kind of narrow scope down a little bit. There are themes that clearly emerged. You know, we were talking about equity, you know, that we were talking about the ELL population. We were talking about the profile of the graduate, which a lot of students were like, wait, what? And teachers were like, it's fabulous. So, you know, we've got, we've got to tighten some things up and look at some, some concerns that were raised. So I'm not going to go through these documents with you. Hopefully you have some time. I know it was a lot to go through, a lot about communication, a lot about making sure teaching is meaningful for the student and how they can apply it to their post-grad plans. So.
And preparing case for post-grad plans that are diverse.
Yes.
Not just everyone being college bound.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. You know, a lot about those real life skills, which I know, um, in our board member master doc, a couple people wrote about, you know, finances and relationships and, you know, all those kinds of life skills that.
Member of society.
Exactly. You know, that you can function, um, at a, at a high level regardless of where you go after, after high school. So.
I wonder too, if that now becomes more, um, accentuated because right that, those responses were sold out before the pandemic and the isolation that's kind of. and the isolations, that's kind of developed as a part of masking and having quarantine and, right? Because those social skills, I think, are identified anyway, by the nature of people being on, you know, like, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's fine. So, that's, that's kind of where we are, is this, you know, hopefully Friday we can tighten things up a little bit and continue to narrow the, you know, identify, we're hoping three to four goals, and then, you know, from there, and a lot of them do overlap. But I just wanted to open that up, questions and give some of your feedback.
Before you do that, I just want to say that at a very high level, I don't think you're going to see a huge departure from the major concepts in our current strategic plan. Like, no one said you're going totally off the rails here.
Right, because.
So, I think that we will be able to build up from there, which is exciting. And I think that, that the district, most of us are so comfortable using strategic planning now that we're able to be a little bit more sophisticated in our implementation.
My question is, oh, with respect to these documents, how do they relate to one another, so that I can interpret them correctly?
Well, so, so first of all would be the stu, the Old Zabre survey data. So, you see student responses, parent responses, and then teacher responses.
Yeah.
So, that was one of the first pieces that we looked at.
And then, you know, systematic analysis.
Yes, yeah.
Which fed into this, right, this single page one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then as far as the, the master document that, that we all filled out as the board, that, that's, that's something that I'm going to look at a lot closer and make sure that the themes that we as a board came up with are represented here. A lot of it is, but I think there might be a few gaps as well. So, you know, I want to ask if there's anything that anybody here wants to really highlight as an area focus that they don't want overlooked. Happy to share that with the committee.
Do you have any other questions here? I have Old Zabre survey data and set the responses for the question.
I'm, I'm sorry, Eileen, I have trouble hearing you.
That's okay. Old Zabre survey data.
Right.
So, it says, you know, the responses are lower, but the, the questions here that are asked of them.
So, that data is not here tonight, but we did review that data as a guiding coalition. We went through the questions and the individual answers. But, no, we did not give you this, because that didn't provide a lot of summary information.
Yeah.
Right, just, for instance, I think it's helpful, maybe I can talk to you about separately, about, for instance, student responses to questions about how most teachers communicate, you know, so was there more than that than just having teachers communicate? Or could they be better communicators? Whatever the percentage is. Yeah, this is expectation. You don't really get a whole, whole picture.
So, I can, I can read to you what the questions were.
And that, that's the thing, but I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be something I could follow up.
And, and everybody, each group was asked similar questions, obviously from the, from their own perspective. You know, but the kids were asked some very direct questions, like what, what would you change about school and why? What if, what matters to you most about educational opportunities, experiences that you're currently getting? How was the shutdown? We, we didn't want to ignore COVID, so we said, how has the COVID-19 shutdown impacted you? How has COVID-19 made you think differently about your education? In other words, let's take the best of a bad situation and carry it forward. What is this school district doing for you right now to make sure that you achieve your highest aspirations, care for others in the environment, and contribute to a global society? Those are the questions the kids were asked. But we can email the questions without, or show the Google Doc.
Yeah, so that's the responses, then we can align with the questions, for, you know, the necessity.
I think Yamity's the keeper of those, so I'll ask her to send those to you.
Jim, did you have a question?
Sure. Karen, I'm taking a look at, should I direct this question to Karen? Is she the focal point here? Okay. I'm looking, if I look at the survey data and I take a look at item number six in particular, so we've got equity of opportunity.
Oh, for students, okay.
So, it, it says the highest agreement was in relation to gender with race, ethnicity next, 80%. Does that indicate that we, the students in the first case, and the parents in the second case, are in agreement that there is equity of opportunity with respect to those categories?
Yeah, so it's question five, it says on the parent.
In other words, if, if we pose a question, is there equity of opportunity in terms of gender? 85% of the students would say yes.
Yes, there is.
Eighty-five is good.
Yeah.
Correct, right. That's, that's what I was, I was, I was seeing here, and it seems like the parent responses is along the same line, and the educator responses are on the same line. So, my question would be, it seems like we're spending an inordinate amount of time and professional development trying to correct a problem that we don't even have.
So, Jim, the only thing I'd point out is the educator's response was very different. Their response is number five under educators?
Yep.
Yeah.
And they seem to be in the 93%, as far as gender goes.
Right, but the next group that they, that was very different was that ELL population, like, which. But you're right about the other two, both the parents, so both the, the parents and the, the staff felt there was a concern about students who are ELL students, basically. But there was agreement between parents and, and students about equity of opportunity, particularly on gender. And race ethnicity was also quite high, not as high as we'd like it to be, but.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm missing the one you referred to about ELL.
So, go to, you mean the educator one?
It's under the educator section, Jim, on bullet number five.
It's the third page, yeah.
Yep.
So, what you're seeing here, just to be clear, you won't find, use the word equity, you won't find that these match each other, because what the consultant did was pull out those things that were either striking because they were so similar or just striking because they were disparate, to sort of show the highs and the lows. And so, on ones where everybody seemed to be aligned, she wanted to make that point, and on things that, that were very different. The student said one thing, and parents and teachers said something else, perhaps. She wanted us to see those, but this isn't, this is a summary report.
Okay, but i, if I look at.
Yeah.
Student and parent, and maybe even a little bit educator, that's a little bit different.
Yeah.
It seems to be that a lot of the responses are in agreement with each other.
Yes, on that topic, yeah.
And I were at the high end of the spectrum, if you will, in agreement.
Yes, certainly on gender, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
My children still ask me why we need a woman to stream them.
In fact, it's a little bit higher than I would expect it to be. I mean, just in a common sense framework, based on, you know, there will always be people that feel their group is not as well-represented as other groups would be, but, I mean, it's high.
And certainly based on like, kind of the, the social climate, you know, today. One would, one would have figured that those numbers would have been lower, just based on the overall social climate. I agree. Were the children and the parents not asked about economics, or it wasn't noteworthy? You know, equity based on, so, you know, socioeconomic basis?
I think it was not noteworthy.
It wasn't noteworthy. I was just curious, because again, that's one of those things, just based on the COVID climate right now, that all of a sudden, you know, especially last year, we saw such a huge disparity, talk about access and equity, you know, really fell apart, you know, upon that kind of money lines, you know, right? Not everybody could afford to have cell phones, not everybody affords to have internet, you know, that was access and equity. You know, generally, you would think that would be a number that might stand out in space, too.
And then, you know, the questions were, were presented with agree, I agree, I disagree, and, you know, a couple comments were like, you know, I'm kind of somewhere in the middle. I, so I think the results.
It's difficult to parse.
It's difficult. It was difficult, I think, the way Isabel presented the questions.
Go ahead, Jim, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, just a quick statement is, I also find, I don't know if it's response nine, but topic number nine here, which says themes from student comments, focus on real world and actual learning, don't teach the tall saying, which are a lot of the things that we had seen in the document that we all got together and discussed last fall.
The topic we agreed on, right?
Which is, you know, we don't want everybody to be cut from the same cookie cutter. We want to have people get their interest in, let's say needlework, for example. You know, let's, let's find a path so they can explore their strengths, and that could be a real-world application if they wanted to get into the teachers' business, for example.
Yeah, that is a theme that's coming through.
So, it's good to see that a lot of these things align with, not only what the parents are thinking, but we here in the room are thinking as well. What should the graduate look like, and how can they expand, how can we, I should say, as a district, expand our education process to include a lot of the outliers that want to study an individual focus area and possibly a future career?
And that's a really, that's a really important component of education here, that, that personalized learning, so that people can explore what interests them. It's why we are really dedicated to, and, and let me first say that Karen and I, again, just a few minutes before this meeting, we were talking about how impressed we are that there's so many common things in the responses that we're getting. There are some disparity, disparate, and, you know, answers and information, but not a lot. And not a lot that's different from what our strategic plan has been attempting to do already. It's, it's definitely taking it to the next level. It's definitely different from what it was five years ago, in the, in the fact that it's five years later.
Right.
But, but there, there has not been such a huge departure that, that they feel like they, we need to go in a totally different direction. None of them seem to feel that way. So, we feel really, feel really heartened about that.
Good information, yeah.
Yeah, but we also can see these, these themes and these trends coming up. One of the things that did not make it onto my mid-year, but is a behemoth of a project that we are in the midst of, is looking at our scheduling at all three schools. And I'll come back to buy in a second. So, we are, we are looking at our seventh, eighth grade group, which we said we're going to treat as a higher middle school group, rather than the five, sixth grade is going to be sort of your lower middle school group, which was part of that moving to fourth grade and then what was going to be the follow-up. We're still finalizing all those plans to implement for next year. But at the same time, remember certification goes seventh through 12, teacher certification, or K or pre-K through six. So, our other reason for doing that is so that we can utilize staff very effectively, because we are a small district and we have grown smaller over the last 10 years. And we need to keep as many of our staff whole and full-time, and in order to be able to do that, we may need to move them from the high school to the middle school during the course of the day and vice versa, or from Goodwin to the lower grades at the middle school. In order to do that, you have to have schedules that look more alike than our current schedules do. And in order to be able to offer robust programming with electives for students to really feel engaged and interested in what they're learning, particularly obviously at the high school level, we, we have to be able to keep the programs in place, which means we have to simplify our schedule in other ways. The whole long scheduling lesson that I will do tonight. But we are, right now, as an administrative team, meeting with an outside consultant, because scheduling is a very personal topic. Everybody is committed to their schedule, even though you'll find no dat, data that will tell you what the ideal educational schedule is. Everybody feels like there's this, like, we can't touch this. So, when you hire someone on the outside with a different voice, they might say, you probably couldn't touch that, let's look at that. And so, we're meeting with this outside consultant and trying to put it together, because we're very concerned, Jim, that if we don't do that, we don't get these practical, logistical problems out of the way, we will not be able to offer the robust program that we need to. We do not want to become a second-class high school. We want to be the first-class flagship high school and middle school, to have good electives there, too. And we want to keep as many of our staff that we need full-time, because once you start reducing them to point eight, point seven, they go someplace else. So, that is, I, I wish we could be taking that on in a different year, but it had to be taken on this year. And it's for that reason, you know, we just, we just want, don't want kids to feel like, oh, my high school can't do that.
Right, can't take the courses I want to take. There's electives, yeah. I mean, it's just, we've been talking about scheduling forever and the complications of it.
I see your question, Eileen, go ahead.
No, it's just more of something that I've always, you know, really tried to, it's interesting for, and when did this start? And, you know, that they have a guiding person that follows those students and where their interests lie, you know, the state committee of, 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 athletes. You know, and that, that's not new news, that's old news.
No, that's right.
But it's something that's very much, guidance can just take a little look, the students could have a chance to know where they're headed and where they're going, so they're not locked in, or what could give them the most merit? Opportunity to delve into that areas that they're really interested in. And I don't know, is that, that, just based on what you were saying, it just made me think of something that, is that something we do in Old Zabre? We start at the middle school, or we do these, you know, like, the inventories, you know, you know, guidance, also that somehow follows as possible. But not that's even realistic, but it's terrific if we can do it.
So, we have a number of pieces in place. Yes, they do start that work in middle school, and even very loosely, even at Goodwin, you know, talking about jobs and, but, you know, then they have career day and career events and job shadowing opportunities. And then, of course, once you get to high school, you, you do do inventories. There is part of Navian's opportunity to, I will forget the programs, I won't even try to say if you remember.
I was trying to think of the name as you were talking about.
Remember?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, your kids go through and do that, you know, like what their interests are, you know, and to see what direction they might want to go, and what schools might be good for them, the programs are good for them.
Student success. There are student success plans, but we use, we create opportunities for them to just identify them and then sort of build upon them over the four years that they're at the high school. Plus, remember, we have our Capstone Project and our internships that really are opportunities for kids to explore something they're interested in, apply something they learned in the classroom and explore. And we have, as our outside consultant said, is that you have a lot of electives, like, this is a lot for a small, small school. And that's why I keep trying to nudge classes outside the regular school day, because I think that's the only way some of these are going to survive. You know, that's why we need these early morning classes, and who knows? Maybe another good thing that will come from COVID, maybe, is maybe they'll let us do some Saturday classes or some evening classes. Maybe we'll be able to work with the teachers' union and come up with different opportunities. I know, I might be dreaming about being allowed to do these things. There's actually legislation that you can't go to school on Saturdays, but who knows? We didn't think we'd be doing this a year ago either, so it's possible, because that would save, that would save a lot of us. It would also allow a lot of us to do regional responses to these things, you know? A bunch of kids can come together from four or five communities on a Saturday afternoon, and, oh, by the way, get credit for it.
Especially if there are electives, too, you know, it's not the core, but electives.
And experiential learning, you know? You could, you could take something you did in a classroom and do something with it in the community, which is just, it's, I don't know, maybe it's a fantasy of ours, but that's something we would love to see happen.
Definitely.
I was just thinking that when I heard, you know, about the governor opening up the, you know, school choice program again, and I was like, you know, they're opening it up to still like two, probably urban communities. But I think that really happened many years ago, and integrated some, you know, car schools, students coming from London, I think there was transportation, you know, that was, and that, so that really, that's something that really would foster, you know, ways of meeting other people, because hopefully the case would be reduced to some extent. But I had a question about number five under, let's see, parent response, just a parent response about adult relationships with students ranged from 92%, adults showed that students didn't matter, and then it went down to 67% adults giving students voice, which is having a voice ranked the lowest for students in this category as well. So, I know that it's something that we're working with more toward, and maybe that's where, I don't know where that ends up getting, having a conversation about that.
That was my largest disappointment, that, that was their pers, perspective of it. I was very disappointed, because I thought a lot of work had been done on that. And so, when we drill down to try to find out more about that, we'll have to find out, are we just not talking about it? Are we not doing it, or is it a combination of both?
Because there is a big difference. They're all positive, but matter is one thing.
Yeah.
You know, when I, we like kids, and it's great, but really giving them an opportunity to express and be a part of the class
Yeah.
during a class period is really essential, or just like the other student, we have some of that.
Yeah, I, I think that even our teachers were surprised at that response.
I think you might find, though, that that does dovetail to your conversation about the schedule, because when, you know, just anecdotal, you probably experienced this with your children, and Cindy, and Jim, and you too, Karen, where they're, they feel that they can't choose certain classes because their schedule won't allow it. And I think that comes with a voice, right?
Right.
It doesn't, you know, so I heard my son say to me, oh, well, it doesn't matter, Mom, because I have to take blah, 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 blah next year, and I won't be able to take such and such. And so, when you say words like, it doesn't matter, you know, I think that when you say, Alex, you have a voice in this, you know, he, if you asked him that question in conjunction with that, he would tell. you know, if you asked him that question in conjunction with that, he would tell you no.
Yeah.
So I don't know that it's, I think there are different kinds of voices. There's the voice, do I have a voice in the community? And do I have a voice in the direction I'm going in, right? Those are probably different things.
And there's probably some aspect of it that is an adolescent response to that question.
Yeah.
Well, then there's exactly that.
And you never let me do anything.
Yeah.
You're no fun at home. That made really high. And that's, we should, we need to drill down for sure on that one because that was disappointing and obviously something we need to look at.
But I'm excited to hear about the conversation about the schedule. I know that's been a challenge and, you know, that really does unlock so many things. You know, it's the key to so much opportunity.
It is. And, and as I said to them, the good news is there's absolutely no data that tells us that there's a fabulous schedule out there that we just didn't think of. So we're free to roam about the country and figure out what's going to work for us.
Schedule is best, go ahead, George.
I'm very aware that I don't want to start a solution scene situation and I get some full here.
Easy to choose.
It is, it is. And I, so, but I'm going to ask this question anyway. So, and I know you thought about this, but.
But you're going to ask it anyway.
But also know you thought about this, this answer, the solution, and you decided not to do it. The question is, why have you guys, why are we not doing a quarter system? Essentially, you could now offer one time or period, three, twelve weeks worth of classes that you cannot do on a semester basis. You cram things a lot more in, but you now have, you offer a lot more class options available in a year.
Many courses. Yeah, that comes in and out of favor in education every decade or so. But everything is on the table right now, including the high school looking at trimesters, the middle school looking at quarters, because all of that is far less important than the two big goals we're trying to achieve. Because as I said, nobody has said this is the best schedule for student performance. So with that in mind, we are looking at all of those possibilities.
I heard that Madison is on a quarter.
They're on a trimester.
Trimester.
Yeah, they're on a trimester.
They're not trimester system. So every semester, well, not a quarter at that point, is it?
It's a tri. It's trimester.
Tri, it's right. But essentially, but essentially in two sessions, you finish a whole year of the class and have an extra one to come along. More crammed in, yeah.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about it at our last scheduling meeting. And all of this is, so we have not involved teachers yet. That's not to say we're not going to. We are because they have to be involved in it. But we first have to throw out those things that are not feasible for our district. And before we go out, we need to decide. So they're beta testing. The two associate principals are taking lead on this and they're beta testing what that could look like for those two schools, especially seven through twelve. It's a survival tactic and I think it's going to be better for kids in the long run.
And the opportunity to put those things in there now, you know, we want, right? You know, you want to be able to offer things that are maybe more tech ed or more AP or, you know.
And is it better, like in the case of your son, is it better that there are two sections of a particular class he wants that runs every other year rather than one each year? That he has to take at a particular time and he can't get in at that time, he can't get in? So those are the things that we have to think about. Like, we definitely, maybe we have too many electives. That doesn't mean they have to run every year.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's an opportunity for the four years that you're there. Yep, exactly, I think that's good.
We've already done that with sciences, but we think we need to expand that, too.
No, that's excellent. Eileen, did you have another question?
No, I just wanted to do, we do, do we follow the pathways? Pathways?
Yes, first, yep.
I just didn't know, you know, some.
Yep, our program of studies is actually written up that way at the high school.
I think one of the other things that sort of jumped out at me was on the first student responses about number two, student responses to questions about, well, certainly profiled graduate and questions about learning being engaging, useful, personalized. The percentages were pretty low, you know, students saying they weren't, why am I learning this? I don't know why I'm learning this. So one of the teachers in the meeting said, you know, we need to make every effort, every lesson to say, this is why this is important. This is how it's going to relate to whatever. You know, it has to, it has, it has to be meaningful because if it's not, you've lost them. And that came out loud and clear through student responses. Yeah, it was.
I was going to say that that comment is something you probably all could say. Going through school, why do we have to know this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, but I'm just saying, you can say it, but it doesn't mean that if anything is really addressed. So it really makes your soul search, I mean, as a teacher, as an educator, as to why we're doing what we're doing, what, because we only have a certain amount of time to educate. And how are we going to be able to justify why this is important?
How it can relate to, yeah.
And that's a lot, that's a lot to think through.
Yeah.
It really is.
But necessary so you can justify. I mean, what you learn at school is one piece of it. It takes a lot of self-learning to do on your own as well.
Learning's fun. I just think number eight is the most interesting or somewhere along there for the students. The percent of students that say they don't know or they have no opinion, very low. I mean, not higher on program, you know, on profile of graduate. But that's, those are actually pretty low numbers, right, considering.
Considering their team.
Yeah.
They're just teenagers. They're not in a scholarship.
Which is a favorite response of.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, on the, on the program of graduate, there's a lot of talk about that. You know, somebody suggested maybe it should be profile of a learner. How do we, how do we, you know, engage younger students when it's called profile of graduate? It's just not, it's just not making sense to a lot of kids.
State, but maybe it doesn't work at the lower levels.
It may, I don't think it works at any level, quite frankly. I never did.
That's funny.
But I, you know, I think that really needs to be looked at so it's more meaningful.
It's kid's world, 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 world.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought he would.
Karen, thanks for your work on this.
Oh, yeah.
And for being the volunteer.
Sure.
The volunteer.
I kept waiting, I was very patiently waiting for somebody to volunteer.
So we, at this point, are going to pivot into executive session. So if we can get a motion to go into executive session, maybe we'll take like a five-minute mask, stand-up bio break. Does that sound good to everyone?
And we need the cookies that are outside.
Yeah, exactly. There's cookies somewhere. Sorry.
Cookie boxes.
Yeah, the cookie boxes that we don't have.
I don't know about you, but COVID has not been great for me. So, so.
So let's, let's take a.
I'm not pausing the meeting right now. Can I leave this running? Because if I pause it, then I have to un-pause it. I'm not sure we're going to do that twice.
So we're going to go to, so we're going to go into executive session. So.
Do you want to move?
Let's move to go into executive session, inviting in Jan and Yan at executive session. So it's a motion for that. Move by Eileen, seconded by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So move, so yeah, if you want to mute it, Jan, that would be great.
You didn't turn off the recording. So they still watch us and just don't have a say.
And we're going to take recess.
And we're going to take, yeah, let's take a five. There we go.
And you can put the video to you.
Yeah, do you want to start the video? We turn the video after.
Yeah.
Are you saying shut off what?
That one.
Start video.
Click right there, there you go. All right. All right, so it is ten twenty-seven PM and we are coming out of the executive session. So I'd like to put forth a motion to add an agenda item in regards to possible board action pertaining to approval of,[1684.92]